Jerem.
Here.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Here.
Harding. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing today for our invocation by Councilmember Rich Pauls?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm currently on a what I call the scout circuit because at this time of the year, a lot of the scouts are to move to one level to another, they need to speak to somebody in government. So I was speaking to one group at Hitchcock Elementary. As I walked up to the school, I saw a bunch of little rocks around this tree. And being a former principal, I said, "Man, I've never let the rocks around the school," but they were very colorful. So when I walked out, I meant to stop and look at it, but I didn't. But a couple of days later, I was walking around, many of you probably know about Charlie's on the Lake. There's a restaurant there, about 100, I would do some advertising, about 144th and F. Well, behind it, there is a lake. And the developers put a lot of large boulders around to make it more attractive. And I noticed on one of the boulders, there's a planter full of flowers. It's been there for the last couple of years. So somebody in the apartments must have a planter there. Well, as I walked by, I saw a little plastic bag by this. I said, "Oh, somebody must have stopped and had a snack and left the bag there." So I walked over there, being a good person than I hope that I am, so I'd pick it up and throw it away. Well, I looked at this little bag, and there was a rock in it. And this was in that bag. This is the note. "This is a kindness rock. This special rock was decorated by a student at Willidale Elementary School in Mildred, Nebraska. Even after 30, 40 years, they still think they're Mildred, Nebraska. This rock was placed here just for you to find. It is our hope that this rock brings a smile to your face," which it did, because it's very colorful. "Keep this rock as a reminder to spread kindness wherever you go, or leave the rock and message somewhere else for someone else to find." I do not have the rock, because I did what they told me to do. I left the rock at another place, hoping somebody else would see it. And I put a little message in it similar to this, to show you, you know, that we do need a little kindness. I was going to bring you guys the rock, because I was planning to go back to that school that had all those little rocks. That dawned on me, that's what it was. A lot of the schools around here, they're using the word "be kind." And that was on that rock, a little colored rock. So I just thought that even though I don't have a rock to give you, I hope I am kind to you as you are to me. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. Councilmembers, thank you for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, I would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary platform at Justic Point located southwest of 168th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Western Road. Appearing on behalf of the applicant, this is the commercial mixed-use portion of the Majestic Point subdivision, simply here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item six, there are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 6727 North 87th Circle. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today proponents, please.
Randy Kuschak, 14710 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions you may have today.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item seven, there are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, in ordinance to rezone the property located northwest of 90th Street and Mockingbird Drive from R1 District to R3 District to R3 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item eight, there are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Items nine and 10 relate to the same property located at 134th Circle and Bedford Avenue and can be considered together. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, in ordinance to rezone this property from DR District to R3 District to DR District. Item 10, in ordinance to rezone this property from DR District to R3 District to R3 District.
Public hearing on agenda items nine and 10 are today proponents, please.
Heather Eva, 3335 North 134th Circle. I'm just here to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any other... You're good. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Oh, you had your light on. I'm kidding. Go ahead. You do have your light on.
I just wanted to welcome Ms. Eva to City Council. We go way back. Councilman Pauls, she's one of... I would say she is the best teacher I have ever encountered in all of my years with my children. And my son's 24 now and still says you're his favorite.
And he was one of my favorite guys ever, so yes.
So anyway, just wanted to thank you and I know for coming down here and I moved to approve it. Thank you.
Is there a second? You can move both.
You can move both.
Yeah. I didn't hear a second. Was there a second? Oh, a second. Moving to second to approve items nine and 10. No further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items nine and 10 are approved, seven to zero. Item 11, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 333 South 132nd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item 11, no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Items 12 and 13 relate to the same property located at 6143 Whitmore Street and can be considered together. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, in ordinance to rezone this property from R2 District to R3 District to R3 District. Item 13, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 12 and 13 are today proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve items 12 and 13, there are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 12 and 13 are approved, seven to zero. Item 14, in ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement for West Point to allow for multifamily residential located at 15450 and 15454 Ruggles Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 is today proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. Jim Bujer, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the applicant, Malibu Properties and Summit Development. This is an 84-unit, two-building apartment complex to be constructed just north of 156th and West Maple Road between Ruggles and Taylor Street at about 155th Street. There are two lots in the West Point subdivision, which was developed by George Van Tijker and his company, and are one of the few remaining lots in the subdivision. We're here today on an amendment to request to amend the mixed-use agreement for the West Point development to allow the construction of the apartment project. The original plan for this project was for office and retail, and we want to do multifamily in there, which is a permitted use within a mixed-use district. We also need to amend the height restrictions from 245 feet from 35 feet, which is approved in the MU agreement. So just to prep you all, the location of the project is shown on this map here. For reference point, this is West Maple Road, 156th Street. This is a residential subdivision called Torrey Pines, and I don't know if there's representatives here. They may be from the Homers Association. We've been had a couple of public meetings with them and had numerous discussions with the residents to address some of their concerns. Probably the major concern that they have or the biggest concern was traffic-oriented. Some of these streets during the AM and peak, AM and PM peak hours are a little challenging. Getting out to 156th Street, there's a signal at the intersection of 156th and Taylor Street. And as represented by the residential owners, there's some traffic backup that occurs during peak hours and makes things a little bit difficult. One of the things that we do have, the planning and public works did ask us to do a traffic analysis to analyze what impact the apartment project would have versus the existing permitted use, which was the commercial office use. And we do have the traffic engineers here from Olson Associates, and they can walk through those numbers with you. But effectively, the total trip generations that would result from this project are about half of what they would be with an office slash retail-type project. And both during the AM peak hours and PM peak hours, which means when people are going to and coming to work, the trip generations are also substantially less than would be under the approved use. So while we would acknowledge that there may be some traffic issues in the area, we believe that our project is actually maybe helping that compared to what was the approved use. And we think there's a favorable use, at least from the neighborhood perspective. There were also a lot of discussions at the meetings about what type of project we were going to build. Would it be a market-rate type project, and it is a market-rate type project, which means that it's not subsidized-type housing, and that was important to the neighbors to understand what type of buildings we were going to construct. Willie Douglas is with Malibu Homes and Malibu Properties, who will be developing the project. His company, his home building company builds high-end homes and does other commercial projects. And we've hired an architect from Lincoln to do, and I have some architectural renderings if anybody would like to see them. But it is going to be a higher-end project, a higher-end apartment project. There was also some concerns regarding the buffering between the project and the Torrey Pines neighborhood. I'll just kind of illustrate. If you can see here, this is the west boundary of our project, the east boundary of the Torrey Pines neighborhood. You will see that on our drawing and our site plan, we have a 50-foot buffer, landscape buffer, between the lot lines of the Torrey Pines neighborhood and our project, which is actually in excess of what the minimum buffer requirements are. I'm going to throw up another picture here, which will help illustrate the fact that there are presently... When the Torrey Pines neighborhood developed, they built, anticipating future development to the east, they built a really nice buffer of trees on the east side of their subdivision, which are now mature trees. In addition to the existing row of trees, which is on that, essentially in the boundary line, we will be putting in another row of trees again to help buffer the neighborhood. And if you're ever out in the area, again, from a visibility standpoint, the product that we're going to build, essentially from the Torrey Pines neighborhood down to our development, it slopes downhill. So the Torrey Pines neighborhood sits above where our project is, and below our project, it continues to go down to a big drainage ditch that runs to the east of our project. And so with that elevation change, we're able to build these apartments, and Jeff Lake can explain better how that works, but we're able to effectively build a four-story product that, looking from the residential neighborhood, looks like a three-story project. You know, it's four stories on the west side down to the... It's like a walkout almost down to the west side of the project. So we've reviewed all of these items with the residential neighbors. So let me get to the other challenging neighbor issues. So immediately to the north of our project, there's a childhood development center, Hamilton Heights, that has been in existence for quite some time. And when they built their project, you can't really see it here, but it's... This is the north side of our project. The street was effectively stubbed out to our development with the anticipation that there would be connectivity from Taylor Street, which is on the north side of the daycare, over to Ruggles Street, which is on the east side of our project, or I'm sorry, on the south side of our project. And so when they... When Mr. Van Tijker developed the subdivision, they filed a set of covenants and created some easements that created this cross-access that would allow the traffic to flow through these two properties, and also created a cross-parking easements between the two projects. And we have, and I'll let Jeff speak to the numerous discussions that we've had with both the daycare owner and the operator, because we're very sensitive to the fact that there's going to be young children in the area in the morning, particularly drop-off and in the evening for pickup. And to create a safe environment for the traffic flow through the project, and we've committed to the daycare operator that we will work with them to do our very best to alleviate any traffic flow issues. You'll also see that our design has a right angle from our main drive, such that it will prevent really a high rate of speed to be generated through our project over into the daycare site. And I would anticipate we'll have some signage here and potentially a speed bump, again, to make sure that the traffic is slowed down through that area. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Jeff Lake and Willie Douglas are both here from the developers, and Dan Belizzi and Aaron Weis are here from Olson Associates to answer any questions you might have regarding our project.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. I'm Adrienne Agula, the owner of Make Kids Thrive LLC, which operates the childcare center, Hamilton Heights Child Development Center, at 15475 Taylor Street. I wanted to just go on the record today, not necessarily with an opposition, but just letting you know that this center that is on the north side of the development being discussed here is licensed for 200 children. So we have approximately 125 families that come in and out of our center every day during peak drop-off and pickup hours. Those children are ages six weeks to 12 years old. So we also transport children to and from the local elementary schools in the area. And oftentimes, that involves one teacher or two teachers that are responsible for 10 children or 12 children walking through the parking lot. And this is a safety concern that we at Hamilton Heights spend all day, every day worrying about without the apartments there. And so I am very pleased that we've been able to work with the developers on making sure that this is as safe as possible, and that there are stop signs and speed bumps and all the other necessary precautions that go into this development. I want to make sure that that type of cooperation continues. And if there's anything that we can do from a record-keeping point of view to keep that on the record and make sure that those promises are upheld, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, Council. Mark Von Drosick, 211 South 37th Street. I'm not going to talk about the market-rate affordability of these houses today. I just want to make a quick comment about the walkability and the bikeability of this project. I don't see any sidewalks on this design in front of us here. But if you go out to West Omaha and you try to walk anywhere, or you try to ride a bike anywhere, it becomes clear very quickly that there are many businesses, many buildings, homes, apartment complexes, which simply have absolutely no sidewalks to get to the buildings from the street, even if there is a sidewalk along the street, which it doesn't appear that there is on this project. There's often not a sidewalk from the sidewalk itself to the building. And in reference to the person who's concerned about the childcare facility, as we build these infill development projects, we need to make sure that each of these tiny little projects that we allow builds in walkability for pedestrians and bicyclists, to not only improve safety for the people who live in the environment, but to improve the economic viability of the area for people who don't want to live in an area where they need a car, things like that. So I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, do you wish any rebuttal time, Mr. Bujer?
Yeah, I think I can answer the sidewalk question and happy to answer any other questions. So we will be building, and we are required to build a sidewalk along the south side of our project. And we've also, at the request of planning, we are going to be extending the sidewalk. You'll see that there's an existing sidewalk. This is an outlot that's owned by, still owned by the association that operates the West Point area. We are going to be connecting that sidewalk up to our sidewalk on both the north and south sides of that outlot. So even on the north side, where the Hamilton Heights facility is, that sidewalk was never connected along that outlot. And I believe that we're connecting that sidewalk as well. Is that correct, Jeff? So there will be that connectivity and sidewalk be addressed in our project. Thank you.
Mr. Bujer, just to double-check with you, you still going to be working with neighbors on an ongoing basis to work out any details or any issues that they may have?
Absolutely, yeah. And with respect to the daycare, I think it'll probably be a little bit of kind of seeing how it works and trying to develop a best-case strategy for moving the traffic through there the best we can to keep those kids safe, so.
Thank you. With that, we close the public hearing. Ms. Melton.
I don't know if it's you or Jeff, Mr. Lake, if you could stand up, because I know what Adrian was kind of looking for, so.
Good afternoon, Jeff Lake, 21008 Cumberland Drive.
And first of all, I want to say thank you, because actually about a month or two ago, when I started receiving numerous emails in opposition to this project, I know that you've met with many of the neighbors, you've met with everybody that had issues, and you've really been working towards trying to make this feasible. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I wish I'd have been invited to the first public meeting. I hate it when I'm not invited to meetings, President Gray.
It's both of us.
I feel your pain.
But no, but I... No, but you were working with the neighbors, and I've had contact with many of them. And obviously, in the end, I think we worked out most, you worked out most of the issues, except we just have this one sticking issue that isn't going to be solved. But we do want to make sure that the kids in Hamilton Heights, that you are going to take all the precautions that you can and that they can. So could you, for the record for the owner who just appeared, state that if they do wish to have the speed bumps put in, or signs that you're going to work with putting those in?
Absolutely. Go on the record and say that. We'll continue to work with the daycare and Ms. Agula on what's the safest and best way to make that work. We want safety for that as well. We don't want to put anybody at risk. And we've thrown around quite a few ideas, and as we get through design and implementation, it seems like that's where we, you know, figure out what the practices that work best. I think at Planning Board, we made a commitment to put in a speed table and a stop sign. We're certainly willing to do that. And anything else in addition to that, look at what happens with time of day, and, you know, what's the best way to handle that? Seems like once it's operational and we kind of see what's happening, is the time to really figure out the minute details of safety. But big picture, I think the design-wise, with the turns, should slow down any traffic from going through there fast. Sinage, stop signs, speed bumps certainly help. And if there's anything beyond that, we're willing to look at it.
Well, and I think because you're going to have the same people, because these people will live in the apartments, they'll be knowledgeable that there is a daycare. They'll start to... There'll be patterns, I think, that they'll pick up on, which if this was office retail, that would not, that would not be the case. So in this particular case, this development is actually better than what it's zoned for, because it's less traffic, and it'll be the same people going up and down the street. So they'll be knowing to watch for children and that kind of thing. So I think this is better for the neighborhood than the way it was zoned. And I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. And that is a private street, so you don't have to go through the petition process. We confirmed with the city that that's something that you and Hamilton Heights can work out between the two of you without getting any further permission from the city or going through that whole petition process. I think there were residents that lived in Torrey Pines that were concerned with potential traffic going through their neighborhood, that they may need to go through that petition process for the speed bumps. But we'll provide that information to them if it becomes an issue. So I just, I want to thank you for taking the time to meet with everybody and continue to work with Hamilton Heights.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, I will make a motion to approve it.
Moving to second to approve item 14, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 15 through 20 were held on September 18th, 2018. Moving to second to approve, no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 15 through 20 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 21 through 23 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. There are motions. Oh, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. I didn't want to take this one off, so thanks for the time. I just wanted to publicly thank Public Works and Planning for their work on item number 21, the Vinton Street Acorn Light Project. I know ever since I got elected, it's been on my radar, and I'm glad to say all those signs have been toting around showing everybody is finally going to come to light. Just made that up, by the way. So anyway, thank you to those working on this. I know it's not been easy, as with any project. And as we continue to see all the development across the city, that we're truly still invested in the heartbeat of the city, which is South Omaha. Thank you.
Is that a motion, Mr. Palermo? Moving to second to approve items 21 through 23, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 21 to 23 are approved, seven to zero. Item 24, providing for the designation of enhanced employment area and the levy of a general business occupation tax for the landmark building project.
Moving to second to approve item 24, no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 24 is approved, six to one. Item 25, in ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment and occupation tax agreement with Avidin Landmark LLC for redevelopment project plan located northeast of 13th and Harnett Streets in an amount up to $9,824,122.
Moving to second to approve item 25, no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 25 is approved, seven to zero. Item 26, in ordinance to amend sections 30-263, 30-264, and 30-265 of the Omaha Municipal Code to reduce the number of members of the fireworks committee to four, to reduce the number of fireworks sales permits issued from 50 to 40, to add a requirement for the permit holder to post a city-approved sign displaying the fireworks discharge period and the penalties for conviction of a violation, A's communication and support. fireworks sales permits issued from 50 to 40, to add a requirement for the permit holder to post a city-approved sign displaying the fireworks discharge period and the penalties for conviction of a violation is communication and support.
Move to approve. Moving to seconded to approve item 26. No lights. Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, your lights?
Sorry.
Oh, now it's on. Mr. Harding.
Thank you. That was fast. Sorry, on number 26, hold on, I gotta get my notes out there. I'd like to offer an amendment to, in the opening paragraph, where it reads, "To reduce the number of fireworks sales permits issued from 50 to 40," I'd like to strike that from the ordinance and offer that as an amendment. And the reason being for that is, I know the Law Committee made the recommendation to move it to 40. I think, as it was explained to me, it was in part because there was a majority of the permits that were issued were east of 72nd, and just by eliminating or reducing the number from 50 to 40 doesn't necessarily ensure that those permits would then go to, I guess, if you will, using 72nd Street as a more balanced number of permits, east and west of 72nd. And, so first of all, I don't know that we should be looking at this as an east and west of 72nd issue, but in addition to that, I think the market's going to drive where the stands end up going, and I don't know that reducing the number from 50 to 40 is really, at least as proposed, will have the desired effect that maybe the Law Committee was looking for. So, with that, I'd like to make an amendment to Agenda Item Number 26 to strike the words "to reduce the number of fireworks sales permits issued from 50 to 40." And then additionally, I think you'd have to make a change in section 30-264, and again, it would, where it changes the number from 50 to 40, to leave that at 50.
So is that a substitute motion, or is that a?
That'd be a substitute.
That'd be a substitute motion.
So.
No, it'd just be an amendment.
No, it's an amendment.
Yep, it's an amendment.
It's just an amendment, okay.
I had made a motion to approve, and it was seconded, so wouldn't it be a substitute?
You'd have to be a substitute motion, wouldn't it?
Because I wasn't.
Because it's moved in seconded.
Because you recognized my light.
Yeah, it was moved in seconded to approve.
I think it's a substitute motion.
All right.
But still, you still get a vote.
Yeah, you still have to, you still get to vote first.
No, I know, I just.
Yeah. So I think, am I right, Madam Clerk, that it has to be?
I think you can just have it as amendment, even if you had a motion and a second, because no votes occurred. I'll defer to law, though. I think it's just an amendment.
Either way works.
Okay.
Either way works, okay. All right, we'll.
We're voting on the amendment.
We'll vote on the amendment first. There are no more lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
No.
Palermo.
No.
Festerson.
No.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
The amendment failed, two to five.
We're back to the original motion?
We're back to the original motion, yep.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve as is. No further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 26 is approved, seven to zero. Item 27, an ordinance to amend sections 20-230 and 30-261 of the Omaha Municipal Code to shorten the period of time currently allowed for the use of fireworks to June 30th through July 4th, and to shorten the period of time currently allowed for the sale of fireworks to June 29th through July 4th, and to shorten the hours allowed for the use of fireworks except for July 4th. E is an amendment requested by Councilmember Melton dated July 20th, 2018. F is an amendment requested by the Law Department. G is an amendment requested by the Law Department. H is an amendment requested by the Law Department.
The public hearing was held on August 7th. We're voting today. Ms. Melton?
Yes, thank you. And I just want to say, I'm asking that we take no action on E, because the Law Department requested changes in G that cover the penalties that I had amended previously. And so that's why I'll ask that we take no action on E, because it's covered in, it's covered in G, so, for the public. I just want to say, you know, I agree that we should reduce the amount of time. I think that 10 days, I said the pets and the vets just can't handle that many days in a row of the fireworks. And I know that the mayor proposed five, and the Law Committee came back with three, and I think this council all agreed that we were going to kind of task the Law Committee with trying to figure out what the vast majority of the council members wish to have. And I want to thank Councilman Pauls and the Law Committee for putting the time and effort into that. And although I may think that there should be different days, or we should do it differently, you know, I did agree that we should tax you with coming up with that, and I know that there was a lot of time spent on that. And so, you know, I will support the three days that the Law Committee has proposed. My only problem is, again, with selling for seven, which I actually agree, what I wanted was to have seven and seven, just to make it consistent. But my concern is those four days. So I think we're, those four days when you can buy, but you can't light them off. I think we're going to find that to be an enforcement problem. And I like Councilman Paul's suggestion that the 16 resource officers that we have in the public schools normally be tasked with that nuisance patrol, which I think Chief Schmodder has done in the past. My problem is, is you have four days, and we've got seven districts here. Even if we had them all working, each of our district maybe gets two officers, maybe, 1.5, depending on shifts and vacation. And when you're talking about, on July 5th of this past year, we had 435 calls to 911, even if you had all 16 officers on board, they're not going to be able to cover those kinds of calls. We are going to create, in my opinion, an enforcement problem, or we're going to set an expectation with the citizens of Omaha that there won't be fireworks at all outside those three days. And I think we all know, even when fireworks were illegal, completely, we had fireworks, which I think is why this council approved allowing the fireworks. This was before my time, but I think one or two of you might have been on it. And so, I think, I think we may be given the expectation that we're solving a problem, but we may be creating another one in its place. So, I do think that this council is going to have to be very cognizant of that. We're going to have to work with the Omaha Police Department, and we're probably going to have to come up with some kind of education for the public that I don't believe is in our budget, but letting the public know what the new fireworks rules are. I know we, in the last, in Gen Item Number 26, were requiring the fireworks stands to pass out the new laws, so that everybody has a copy, but as we know, that's going to get stuck in the bag, that the, you know, 10-year-old's going to have in the backseat, and it's going to go right in the garbage as they pull all their fireworks out when they get home. So, I still think there's going to need to be some education, and we cannot have people overloading 911, like we had this last year, for complaints on fireworks. So we're going to have to come up with something different before the end of June of 2019, because this ordinance, I think, is going to create quite a problem that we're not going to be able to address. So, I am, I am supporting it, but cognizant of the issues that I think it's going to create, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I also support this consensus agenda item we have here. I think Councilman Pauls and the committee did a nice job of combining everybody's thoughts on it. I do think reducing 10 days down to three days is a reasonable suggestion, and probably the most important amendment we have to what was proposed earlier of the three we're going to consider today. I do support all three, because I think in addition to setting the expectation of three days only and one day only at New Year's, that the increase in fines also is an inclination of our enforcement prospects, and I'm pleased to see the jail time was taken out of there. I don't think it rises to that occasion, but I do think the fines are an important aspect of potential enforcement. But no matter how you tailor the three days, or the sales period, or frankly, anything else around a fireworks ordinance, enforcement will be an ongoing challenge, and so I look forward to working with that, on that with the council and with the Police Department as well. If you look at the heat map they presented to us over the course of these discussions, a lot of that heat happens in my district, and a lot of the complaints did too, so I'm pleased that we're responding to that by reducing this timeframe to a more reasonable juncture, and I'll be supporting amendments F, G, and H today, and will go ahead and move what I think is the most important one, which is Amendment F. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll echo a little bit of what was said as well, too. I think, I do have a concern with a difference of the number of days to sell and a different number of days to discharge, and we even had the Chief of Police a couple months ago testify to that being a concern of his as well. But I also understand that in working out some resolution here, what we have in front of us is, I think, certainly a move in the right direction. I think we need to remain open-minded, so that, as Councilmember Melton points out, if we find there are some issues that need to be worked through, I think we're all probably at least willing to look at alternatives as we move forward. Again, I would have liked to have seen probably five and five, but I think, I think we've got a reasonable solution here, and I'll, too, be supporting F, G, and H.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo?
I just want to publicly say that fireworks follow along with 4th of July, and I truly do like fireworks. I love the 4th of July time. Family, it's summertime, kids are home, cookouts, and we've gotten away from that, and now we've gotten onto this fireworks, which we have all heard is a problem. So, what do we do? We're elected to change and go forward with that. I want to thank Councilman Pauls, I told him I wouldn't, but I am, for pumping the brakes, because this truly was a task for him and the Law Committee to gather all the information, and those of you that know, know that I don't usually follow along with much, but there was enough in here for me to go with it. It's not perfect. It can't be. As long as the communities that surround us are going to stick with what they have, which is not matching what we have, it's tough for us to say, hey, let's enforce this, let's spend the money and put our men and women in blue out here to stop this, when they can drive or walk and still purchase fireworks. So, you're going to have those people, regardless of what we come up with time, they're still going to light them. I mean, you just can't stop it. So this will help, I think, and obviously, we've heard from people, that we did need a change, and that's what we had to do. Also, there was a part in here from Councilmember Melton that I appreciate bringing up with the fines and obviously taking the jail time out of it, which was nice, because there's going to be them repeat offenders, and they will have to pay the price. So, I, too, will be in favor of it. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Usually when you propose something, you're hoping at least you have four votes. That's, I learned that a long time ago, you need at least four. And I have to be honest, I said that this morning. We spend more time on fireworks than we have done on other things that we spend millions of dollars on. But to me, this is a significant thing, especially because we have an awful lot of pet lovers out there, and more importantly, we do have a number of veterans out there. And so, increasing the days, then you say, on the other hand, let's think about the vets. See, I see that as, that just doesn't work. So if we lower the days, that seems like we're at least trying, we're listening to those individuals. I'm not talking about just the dogs and the cats, I'm talking about the men and women who have served us. We do need to celebrate the 4th of July, because that's the reason why we're being allowed to do what we're doing. But I think the next step would be is, and we ought to visit this on a regular basis. I have no problem with that at all. That's why we meet all the time. But it wouldn't be that hard, apparently, to get to no fireworks. Think about that. If we can't resolve this and this, maybe the next step would be, let's do away with having fireworks. We, apparently, that happened a number of years ago. We didn't have fireworks, although people did fire them. It wasn't legal. That may, maybe that'll be easier for the police to be able to find out who are the bad players in this thing. As I said earlier, and I'll say it again, because Councilwoman Melton did bring this up, we do have resource officers who work during the school year in the schools, at least 15th to 16th in the high schools. These are full-time police officers. Well, I have a feeling, if most of you know, most of the schools do not operate during the summertime, at least for six weeks. So I'm saying is, there are people out there that can be reassigned. So I do not see this as solely that we're throwing this in, throwing something at the police that they cannot help resolve themselves. I think we all, the council and the Police Department, needs to stand up, and the citizens, we need to stand up and say, hey, this is what we need for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Just one comment. I just wanted to thank Mr. Pauls for the work that you did on this effort, and the committee. I'm on the committee, but a lot of the work was done by you, and I appreciate the work and the staff, and I appreciate the work that you and the staff did to bring this about. I don't think it's a secret from anybody what my preference would have been, but in the spirit of compromise, I think we have something that's workable, and it's always in a state of flux. I think we always have to look at it and adjust and make, you know, any adjustments that we see that might have to be made. We may have to do that, but right now, I think we've got something, a framework that, you know, we need to monitor and look at. There may be some adjustments that we might have to make at some point in time, but right now, I would be supportive of this as well, and it's been moved and seconded. I think, were we moving, were we, just F? We're moving, it's been moved and seconded to approve F in Item 27. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
As amended?
27 as amended.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 27 is approved as amended, seven to zero. A public hearing on items 28 to 35 will be held together for the purpose of acquiring Item thirty, constructing Seventy-Eighth Street, Mercy Road to Pacific Street. Item thirty-one, constructing Hundred and Twentieth Street, Stonegate Drive to Rowan Oak Boulevard. Item thirty-two, constructing Hundred and Sixty Street, Q to West Center Road. Item thirty-three, constructing Hundred and Sixty Street, Pacific Street to West Center Road. Item thirty-four, constructing the Crown Point Avenue, Blair High Road to Seventy-Second Street. Item thirty-five, constructing Ninety-Ninth and Ida Storm Sewer Repair.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers twenty-eight through thirty-five are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item. I'm sorry. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a quick dialogue with Mr. Stube on number thirty-four. This is just public hearing today, but I presume these items will be on the consented agenda going forward. I know folks are watching this one in my district. This is the total resurfacing of Crown Point Avenue from Seventy-Second Street to Blair High Road. So a major portion of the street, and a public meeting has been undertaken with the neighborhood discussing some, not only resurfacing, but potentially some modifications to that street. But I want our folks to know, if they're watching this today or have seen this agenda item, that this is, notice suggestions have been made yet in terms of design. There's still public input being taken and suggestions being offered. This is merely the first step in a long step of a project that would be done in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Gail.
Correct. Gail Sternbrenner, City of Omaha Public Works. As Mr. Festerson mentioned, there was a public meeting about three weeks ago where we started to present several alternatives for citizens that live on or travel along Crown Point to garner input for the five options and some of the pedestrian modalities that we were looking for adjacent to the road. The formal public comment period for that just closed on Friday, and we're just starting to compile the data actually tomorrow. We have a big session with our consultant to look at that to determine really what the citizens feel would be most important as far as what the cross-section may look like in the future, how we would handle pedestrian movements, how we may look at providing for bicycle facilities along that roadway.
Thank you. So I look forward to reviewing that information too. And I know you've talked with business owners and Northwest High School. Northwest High School is also very engaged in the conversation. So the ordinance of declaring the necessity of acquiring the property today is just a routine step in the process, and that's what we're doing today and next week, right?
Absolutely, Mr. Festerson. And we are actually not anticipating a lot of right-of-way impacts with this project because, as you mentioned early on, it's really a repurposing of that road. As it says today, it's a four-lane section, and with the traffic volumes that we have out there, we have the opportunity to repurpose with what's in the right-of-way and put back what makes sense, both from vehicular traffic but also with pedestrian movements and vehicle traffic. I do have a graphic here that kind of shows the location of where we're talking about on Crown Point, from Seventy-Second Avenue to Blair High Road. And I've got just one of the concepts up here where you can see, this happens to be a depiction of a three-lane section where we've got a multi-use path to the north side of the roadway with a sidewalk on the south side, just one of the options. So again, right-of-way would, again, for the most part, would not be impacted. I did put this graphic up here because one of the things we would do with the project likely is to realign Winning Hof Road, which is near the connection at Blair High, and there are some parcels down at that area that we would likely be acquiring to redo that road connection in that area. It also is going to give us opportunities to tie in any of the bicycle improvements along this roadway to the Keystone Trail in that area, which, as you're aware, goes along Winning Hof Road in that location.
The thought being, complete streets, as we've talked a lot about in the master plan, right?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll, Gail, as long as you're there, if you wouldn't mind, a little information on thirty-two and thirty-three, which is probably of interest to Mr. Pauls and myself, the constituents of those districts. Just knowing what the final product is likely to look like in terms of, you know, if it's a five-lane section, or, and then timing, if you could.
Absolutely. So for the Two Hundred and Sixty-Eighth Street projects, they both have gone through a very extensive, a need for a federal aid planning process, really for the last ten years. With that, it's been determined the best alternative for that is to put in a four-lane divided or a five-lane section with a raised median being that fifth lane there in the middle for both segments of the Hundred and Sixty-Eighth. That north segment is that piece from Pacific down to Center, and the south piece from Center tying down into Q Street. I do have a depiction of the cross-section up here. Right now, we are targeting to have the north segment, again, from Pacific to Center constructed in twenty, twenty twenty, and looking to do construction for the south segment from Center to Q Street in two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two.
So it may be too early to answer this question, but so is it anticipated that that section of Hundred and Sixty-Eighth Street is closed to all traffic for that period of time, much as we did for Hundred and Sixty-Eighth North Dodge?
On the north segment, there is a limited, and I believe it's a ninety-day closure, ninety to a hundred day closure, for a portion of Hundred and Sixty-Eighth Street in proximity, actually just to the south side of Pine Street, where we do a drainage crossing in that area. Otherwise, that street will be open during a bulk of construction. On the south segment, most of the time, that road will have some through movements planned with it, with some limited closures, and we put some facilities in place. But there would be alternate ways to access homes and businesses, and it's mostly homes along this area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. Next item.
A public hearing will be held together for items thirty-six and thirty-seven. Item thirty-six, an ordinance providing for the designation of enhanced employment area, the levy of a general business occupation tax for Blackstone. Item thirty-seven, an ordinance approving a redevelopment tax and commit financing redevelopment occupation tax agreement with BSHO LLC to implement the Blackstone Hotel Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at Three Zero Two, South Thirty-Sixth Street, in amount up to seven million eight hundred seven thousand dollars.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers thirty-six and thirty-seven are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Kevin Anderson with the mayor's office here on behalf of the EEA Occupation Tax Committee, who recommends approval of the project as proposed. This is a project within a blighted area and subsequent community redevelopment area. It's a twenty-two-point-six-million-dollar request based off of a seventy-five-million-dollar total investment from the developers on the project. The EEA tax being generated by a three percent tax on hotel business as proposed, one-point-nine-five percent tax on food, beverage, and retail within the district as defined, a twenty-five cent per square foot tax on commercial office space, and a hundred and twenty dollars per year on apartment rental units. There is anticipated to be an equivalent of a hundred and thirteen full-time jobs created as a result of the project, and as mentioned before, meets the minimum threshold of other criteria established within the EEA statutes based off of at least three million dollars invested in the project, which we exceed with over seventy-five million dollars invested. That being said, our developer and applicant is here, so I'll stay close for any questions you may have.
Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, basically on behalf of item number thirty-seven, here to answer questions from the planning department.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Matt Dwyer, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham Street, Greensley Development, one of the developers on the project. City Council and members of city staff, thank you for having us today. Today's the culmination of a lot of hard work on behalf of the team to pursue this project and try to bring this iconic building back to life as it was in its former glory as a hotel, as you can see in the image there. And maybe more importantly, it's the culmination of, you know, the last six years of a lot of people putting their sort of blood, sweat, tears, and means on the line here for the Blackstone District to evolve into what it's become, this really being the crown jewel and the pinnacle for what this district has worked hard to achieve here for the last half a decade. We are here to ask for your support, and we have some other folks here that are business owners in the neighborhood that I think would like to voice their support for the project. So I can either call them down, or you can ask for them to come down yourself. I don't know which one's better, so Councilman Jerem, maybe I'll refer to you there.
Where are the proponents, huh? They want to come down?
Yes.
My name is John Farr, and I'm co-owner of Script Town Brewing Company, thirty-nine twenty-four Farnham Street. I just want to say, we took a chance on the Blackstone District five years ago, my wife and I and another partner, to do business in the Blackstone. We would have been in Papillion, but we truly believed in the vision of what could happen in this neighborhood, and we wouldn't want to be anywhere else. And so we are fully in support of what's happening here. And the Blackstone Hotel is a crown jewel and can be what it was fifty years ago with this project, excuse me, can go through. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. My name is Dominic Di Giacomo. I'm representing Di Giacomo's LLC, which is the building owner at thirty-nine ten Farnham Street. We've owned the, the building has been our family for forty years. We are also in favor of this project.
Thank you. You wouldn't be related to Mike, would you?
I am.
Okay.
My name is Matt Mosher, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham Street. I own and operate three businesses in Blackstone District, and I am for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Luis Jimenez, five eighteen North Fortieth Street. I walk by the hotel right now and on a daily basis, so this is going to be a very great improvement for the area, the Blackstone District. But I do want to comment on the TIF. I know that there's been some misunderstanding and objections and disagreements in how the TIF is applied, and there has been discussion on gentrification, and I don't know about that, but I do know that the Buffalo were removed from this area, from this whole state. So let's not forget about the Buffalos and why they were driven almost to extinction. And so by extension, we should keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hello. Jessica Keith with Corkscrew Wine and Cheese at thirty-nine oh eight Farnham Street. My business partner Cory Keith and I would find this of value for the city and the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, Michael Sanchez, thirty-nine thirty-two Farnham, owner of Mula Mexican Restaurant, here to support the project and everyone else in Blackstone and answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Bill Bierich, thirty-five seventy-eight Farnham Street, owner of Crescent Moon Hale House. John said he took a chance about five years ago. I took a chance about twenty-three years ago on the district, so I don't know what took so long getting here. But we were able to survive, and we're still here. And obviously, the Blackstone Hotel is the, is an anchor to the district, and it's directly across the street from my property. So I think I'd be somewhat remiss in not supporting this project. A lot of back and forth, and a lot of questions that I asked and such, but in the end, I think it's, it'd be a great addition to solidifying the Blackstone as a, just a marquee area of town.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Tyler Wilson. I live here in Omaha, and I think it's great that we're taking a gem of a building and we're preserving it and we're taking it back to its former glory. The Blackstone District, as you all know, is a thriving district, and it's a wonderful thing, right? So I just want to thank the private companies that have kind of made this come to fruition. I'd like to thank you and hope that you move it forward.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Jared Alexander, twenty-two oh two South Fortieth. I'm a cultural materials conservator here in Omaha, and so I just wanted to express my gratitude to the developers for the preservation of these historic buildings here in Omaha.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Proponents? Any kind of?
President Gray, members of the council. It's been about three and a half years since I've been at this podium, and it feels kind of good. I am here to fully endorse this development and restoration of the Blackstone Hotel. When I was in, I lived in Wahoo, and we were never to come to Omaha, but one time I got to come to Omaha when I was in middle school, and one of the places we stopped was at the Blackstone Hotel, and I was overwhelmed, and it's a memory that's burned in my head. So I have a lot of personal commitments to that. And then when we moved back here a long time ago with Rick, we had a lot of time dancing in the ballroom and eating in their meals and sharing the events, and it was just a wonderful place to be. And then, of course, I spent my last ten years working in that building. So I have lots of memories and lots of reasons why I think it is so important for us to restore this, I think, our last real iconic historic facility and hotel in this town. So I was really devastated when I learned that the flood had done such disastrous things to that building, and I thought, oh, please don't let this be the end. And then it was even worse when the Kiwett Company pulled out, and I thought, now what's going to happen? So I was never more pleased and relieved when I learned of the team that is put together to make this come back to its glory days. They have demonstrated their commitment and their talents in so many other projects across the city that I know that this will be a tremendous success. And so I put a lot of, a lot of faith into that. But probably one of the most important reasons is what you just heard from the people that spoke in support for this today, because they are the people who are in the Blackstone District, and they are the ones who are going to be most impacted. And this is, they're doing this because it's not only, I think, for the Blackstone District, but for the city as a whole, because that building really reflects what this city is all about and what it can be. In closing, my last year and a half, I have learned a lot by serving on the now Nebraska State Historical Society, and learning again and being reinforced of how important it is that we do guard and protect and restore our wonderful iconic facilities, our historic past. And I think this is just a perfect example of that, and so I urge you all to fully consider your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Matt Dwyer, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham. Just want to say thank you to all the proponents that came here today. And just to close real quick, you know, without the, without the growth of the neighborhood, sort of starting with Mutual of Omaha's work down at Midtown Crossing, you know, more than a decade ago, and everything that the Med Center has done, you know, the stars have seemed to align over the last six years for what's happened in this neighborhood, and it certainly isn't us by ourselves trying to do this, right? This has been a village, for sure, to raise this particular child, including everybody in the council here. So thanks again for all your support, and happy to answer more questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Just any proponent, any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Thank you. Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I hate to bust bubbles, but I have some questions, I think are serious questions, that for lack of transparency need to be asked, because I don't know that I've read anything about these questions, to the average citizen that's not a financial expert or an accountant or attends these meetings regularly, I think they're reasonable questions, such as, well, I remember going to a senior high prom or junior high prom at the Blackstone. Beautiful place. I love the nostalgia, but I'm not sure at my age I can afford it. I used to live in the area over on Thirty-Eighth and Dewey. I don't know whether the people that still own property there can afford it. I don't know that all the young people that we want to attract at Omaha can afford all these high upscale apartments, and the more percentage on every time you go out to eat, and every year it's higher, the tax on the food and the entertainment district. And we can't all walk all around town from one place to another every night and have everybody survive in the business world. It's great that the Crescent Moon survives, but if you can't afford the food and drink, it's going to die. People my age aren't going to continue paying. So I'd like to ask, first of all, I read that the Peter Kiwett Company, a foundation around Omaha that helps, you know, lots of areas, walked away from the building because there's a water main break. Did anybody else walk away? Did it ruin the whole inside of the building? They're a construction company, aren't they? How did they get into that building? Did they get financing from the city? And now somebody else is getting financing? I think those questions need to be asked by the newspapers and answers. I also wonder about tax increment financing. I probably don't understand it properly. Omaha Land Bank, I probably don't understand it properly. But I would like to ask a question that was posed once again on the radio this morning as I was coming down at eight-thirty in the morning, eight-fifteen. And I don't think I'm racist for asking this, but does Mr. Gray have ties to the Omaha Land Bank? Does he or his family make any kind of?
We're talking about, I'm going to declare you out of order now because you're talking, we're talking about the Blackstone Hotel. We're not talking about the land bank. So let's stay with the Blackstone Hotel, please.
But do you in any way, shape, or form?
Let's stay with the Blackstone Hotel, please.
A radio caller on the airwaves?
I'm not going to debate this with you.
A radio caller?
I'm not going to debate this with you. Either you're going to stay on topic or you're going to move.
Once again, sir, thank you. I think he probably should resign.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Alex Singler, 4902 Capital Ave. I spent some time living in the Greenslake area. I lived at 38th and Harney. And I saw the growth, I mean, over time, just the way that Greenslake was able to go in and kind of revamp the whole area. But I think they've done some things that are a little bit overreaching. And I just wonder, with this project, if it's another overreach by them. I'm not sure about Councilman Jerem's ties with Dwyer and with Greenslake and Clarity. I have a lot of questions about this. I have a lot of questions about the 52% stake that the taxpayers have in this building. And if Clarity does sell it, who gets that money? I am in deep opposition to this project and I think it's a detriment to the area. Thanks.
Any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. Mark Brandon, 6915 Evans Street, here representing myself. And the reason I'm here today is that I believe strongly that this project does not meet the mandatory criteria for assistance as outlined in the Community Development Law, 1821-13, 1821-16. And I'll remind the council members that the letter of the law reads, "The developer is able to demonstrate that the project would not be economically feasible without the use of tax incremental financing. In addition, when the project has site alternatives, the proposal demonstrates that it would not occur in the area without TIF, return on investment, ROI, assist in determining the economic feasibility of the project." And so I guess one question I would have for...
You have to direct it.
Ms. Hadley or the Planning Department, whoever could answer it, is, who would ever be able to answer it? I mean, as provided by the developers, the ROI without the use of TIF dollars, the seven and a half billion, would be 6.1%. So at what point do we say, well, what is the percentage that is feasible, right? Because if you ask me, I will take 6.1% year after year after year. That sounds like a good return on investment to me. Now, I may be a poor sap, just barely trying to beat inflation. But, you know, according to them, given the complexity and risk profile, the complexity and risk profile of a full-service luxury hotel operation, investors, investors demand, this is their words, developers' words, in the Planning Department document, investors demand a very attractive prospective return, which can only be achieved through the use of TIF and the many other financing sources being leveraged to bring this project to fruition. So something not really understood by all people and frankly, you as a council should do a better job to inform the public exactly what tax increment financing is among these other, you know, pace and, you know, among these, so that the people aren't misled and they come up here with information that is wrong. So I guess that would be what I have to say and would look forward to your response.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Nope.
We'll get to your question.
All right.
My name is Mark Von Drosick, 211 South 37th Street. I actually live just across the street from this development in a small brick apartment building. As you can see, the opposition to this project is weak and dysfunctional and ignorant of a lot of different things. And I think that has a lot to do with the fact that as a community, I've spoken before about how we are allowing development corporations and corporations in general to lead housing efforts in this city. I want to say unequivocally that I believe that the renovation and the preservation of historic buildings is an extremely important part of maintaining the historic character of our neighborhoods. And I absolutely support the renovation of these historic buildings instead of the demolishing of them and replacing with other things. But I do want to say, it's been mentioned that there will be many jobs created by this project and that's good as well. I would question how much those jobs are going to be paying. And I would say again, probably most of those jobs are going to be minimum wage, nine dollar an hour jobs. There's going to be some serving jobs at the restaurant, some hotel staff, people who will probably make at minimum wage or maybe just above minimum wage at competitive prices. I read an article recently about a server working at a restaurant in San Francisco who had to commute five hours just to get to his job in San Francisco. And it's because he couldn't afford to live anywhere near where his job was. So we are creating jobs and we are preserving historic buildings and that's great. But we need to understand that unequivocally, this development, and although this is a positive development, again, we're preserving an important historical building, this is unequivocally a part of the larger gentrification that is happening to this neighborhood. People, poor and working-class people like myself, are increasingly unable to afford to live in these neighborhoods, the neighborhood where I grew up in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Saying none, do the proponents wish just a little bit of rebuttal time?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I just wanted to speak to, the amount of TIF on this particular project is about 10% of the total project cost of about 78 million. So it's not a huge part of the capital stack or the funding sources. And then in reference to Section 18-21-13 and 18-21-16, 1821-13, I believe is the cost and benefit analysis. And then the other section is, talks about the economic feasibility. These projects have been reviewed by the Economic Development Staff as well as the TIF Committee and of course by yourselves, and have all given approval that the project does comply with the Community Development Law. The cost benefit analysis are some statements that have been given to us through the Community Development Law for the developers to answer and we have felt that they have answered those properly. And as far as the return on investment, I may have to let him speak to that. But basically, every infill development, redevelopment project, any kind of a development project can be costly. And we know urban infill redevelopment is costly. This happens to be redevelopment of, as everyone has said, a very iconic historic building. And there was already spoken of damage to the building, water damage. So lots of costs that are a part of trying to preserve and bring back to life to the highest level possible of projects. So at 78 million, there's going to be a lot of help needed from a financial standpoint. And it is the developers that bring that project to us and say this is the return that they really need to pursue that project. If the private sector doesn't pursue these types of projects, the government generally isn't, the city probably was not going to take that building, is what I would imagine. So we do rely on the private sector to step forward and determine what it's going to take for them to put their money at risk. So I just wanted to answer with that.
Thank you. You may want to have just a minute or so and then we'll ask any questions from our council members.
Yeah, several allusions in some of the testimony, so I'll get what I can kind of answer to and then I'll take any questions from council as well. Kevin Anderson with the Mayor's Office, representing the EEA Occupation Tax Committee. Kind of question on affordability, I guess my response would be this is a market-driven tax alternative to support the project, being that within the defined district, those businesses, those types of uses are subject to the tax as proposed by the developers of the area and of the project at hand. The fact that the largest component of the tax structure is on the hotel activity, I think the assumption can be made that the majority or the brunt of that tax implications are going to be borne by out-of-town guests to the project area. And of course, there's that spillover benefit to the district as well as those out-of-town guests go out for eating, dining, retail, and recreation opportunities. Really, I mean, that's kind of the direct notes I'm able to kind of make from the testimony. So I'll be happy to step aside and answer any direct questions from council.
Thank you. And with that, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Have a seat. Have a seat. Have a seat. Have a seat, sir. Have a seat. Mr. Hardy?
May I proceed?
Yes, you certainly can.
A couple of things before I get to, I think, my main point. One is, I'm not sure that this airs on the same channel as the Learning Network, but I do know, last week, Ms. Melton gave a great TIF 101. So by watching this live or on the replays, you can learn a lot from about what TIF is and enhanced employment areas. Straight off the bat, I'll ask Mr. Kratz, just in the city's estimation, can you confirm that TIF is being used appropriately here?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. Yes, as Ms. Hadley indicated, Planning Department reviews the application for TIF. Then the TIF Committee reviews that application, makes determinations if it's appropriate, and finally comes before the council. So yes, the use of TIF is appropriate in this situation.
Okay, thank you. And then Ms. Hadley also brought up the point that the TIF on this project is only 10%, which is on the lower end of most TIF projects that we see. And then if I could, I'll ask Matt or Tom or Jay, whichever. I've got a couple of questions as it relates to the employment area, enhanced employment area.
Tom Clay, 3814 Farnham Street.
Thank you. I know a number of us, a number of the council members, have gotten some calls as it relates to who actually is included in the enhanced employment area. How does that work? So I think generally, my response has been that if, you know, if it's a property that's owned or controlled by Greenslake or Clarity or has voluntarily opted in to be subject to the enhanced employment area tax, those are the ones that are subject to that tax. So if you could kind of, for the record, walk that through so those people can understand.
That's exact, accurate representation, Councilman. The vast majority of these properties are owned by us. We have talked with all of the business owners throughout the district of properties that are owned by us. We've also spoken with individuals who, properties that we don't own and even their businesses that are owned and have clearly spoken and had contact with every single one of them that is to be affected by this or their businesses. So there really shouldn't be any question. I think Matt Dwyer said it most accurately. If someone isn't sure they're in, they're out. They would not be in this, well... To add on a little bit of clarification on the apartment owner, the apartments, apartment renters are not responsible for this tax. That is a responsibility of us as the apartment owners. That is not something that they are going to be getting any new statement on. They will continue to pay their rent as they have for the past months. Hopefully, they will continue to pay their rent. If they don't, they are no longer able to rent there. That would be a whole nother issue, but this is a standard rental agreement. They pay it just as normal and nothing changes for that.
And then could you also, because I had a number of questions too, from tenants of some of the properties, can you address how that would occur if they have not voluntarily opted in or as they renew their leases?
Anyone, we have spoken with all or reached out and communicated with every tenant, every business tenant, commercial tenant, in every property that would be subject to the EEA and advise them of that scenario. I think you're referencing potentially retail tenants who under the, would be extended during the term of their lease and that during the term of that lease, the current tenants, it would come in upon the expiration of that under the ordinance that is being drafted. But again, there really is, anyone who's questioning that, I think is likely not as a part of this EEA if they don't know.
And then the, one of the other points I wanted to bring up, if someone's got a question about enhanced employment area, is that I think it should be also noted or said for the record of who carries the risk on the EEA. So if you'd like to address that, I'd like to hear that.
We do. We carry the risk on this entire project. This is not a, there's no governmental obligation here. The only risk on the project is upon us. If it does not succeed, the government, the city government, the state government, the federal government, no element of the government has any risk at all of this project were not to work. It is all on us. And that kind of bleeds in a little bit to the commentary on the tax increment financing. This is a remarkably complicated project to pull off to get to where we're hoping to bring this historic building back to. And all of that risk lies on us. And that's where it will remain during the whole duration of this.
Okay. And appreciate those comments and also hopefully that's another education point that we can get across as it relates to both TIF and the enhanced employment area. One, I just have a question. I don't remember seeing this in my packet. This is on her desk. So if this was not in the original packet, can we make sure that it's entered as part of the record? Okay, thank you. I guess the last thing, I'll just comment and thanks, Tom. And I think Mr. Dwyer kind of hit on it earlier too, is that there's some amazing things, well, there are amazing things happening all over Omaha, but certainly within this area too. And I was glad to hear you kind of give Mutual of Omaha some kudos for really kind of kickstarting the investment, I think, in the area and what they've done with Midtown and certainly with what the Med Center's done to the area too. And I think Blackstone, you know, just kind of finishes off that, you know, that, I guess, trident, if you will. And I wish you all the luck and I'll be supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bridget, could I view? Over the past years when, I'll let you...
Bridget Hadley, City Planning.
Thank you. In the past years, I've always asked Cassie to explain what TIF is and she looked at me and I know she, she glassed, you know, because, oh gee, Rich, every year you ask the same question. Today, I noticed we had two or three individuals come to the forefront here and said they didn't understand this, they didn't understand pays, all these incentives. Do we have anywhere on the city's site where they could go to that would show what TIF is all about or do we have that already on the...
Thank you for asking. Yes, we do. I meant to say that. Under the Planning Department, so if anyone goes to the Planning Department website, on the left-hand side, there are tabs. There is a tab for tax increment financing. And so that will take you directly to the tax increment financing website and webpage where you can learn about TIF in Omaha particularly, but it also has a link to the Community Development Law. And also, because I understand TIF, it is not easy to understand if you hear it once or twice or maybe even three times, you have to hear it a few times. I did put together a report, a couple of different reports, and one was kind of an overview, but that report has a section that talks about how TIF works and the financing in Omaha. And it is a developer finance type of tool, meaning it's an incentive to bring forth redevelopment or encourage redevelopment in areas in need of redevelopment in the city of Omaha. And most of those areas are going to be in your urban areas where there's been deterioration. The blighted and substandard conditions speak to why we use TIF as a tool to incentivize redevelopment in these areas. And it basically takes the increase in the taxes of that now project or property that's going to be redeveloped and allows that money to be monetized. The developers go to the bank, they get a loan for that amount of taxes that will be generated over a 15-year period and that allows the project to move forward. But I put together a report that would help explain that because I understand TIF is not an easy topic to talk about. But anyone who wants to know can go to that website and find it. Also, EEA, there is, I don't think we have a website just yet, but it is explained and referenced in the Community Development Law.
Okay. And I just, just one more time, because I know we had, we had an individual up here with a computer, so that shows me he understands technology. Now, what... up here with a computer, so that shows me he understands technology. Now, what website would I go to?
City of Omaha Planning Department website, and on the left-hand side, there is a tab that says tax increment financing. There are so many different ways to go there, I just say City of Omaha Planning website. And you can also Google tax increment financing in Omaha, and you'll go right to the page.
So we are putting it out there, so it's available if we choose to take a look at it, because I think it is confusing, but once you see it, the pattern, it's...
Right, and you see how it's been used in Omaha.
How it's been used and the benefits, so, that's, I just want to make sure, thank you for...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. You know, the, when I first got elected to the City Council in 2009, this neighborhood was basically, except for a few brave souls like Mr. Barbourick, was a bunch of vacant properties, buildings, rundown properties, and a small group that, I would call them the holdouts, the stalwarts, that refused to give up on the neighborhood, wanted to meet and talk about the neighborhood, and included in the group was someone who owned the building at the time on the northeast corner of 40th and Farnum, who shortly thereafter sold it to Mr. Luns Group. And they talked about the potential for bringing the Blackstone District back, and if we could have a two-way street, what a catalyst that would be for the rebirth, regeneration of one of Omaha's former prominent neighborhood business districts that had just become basically a throughway for people on their way home. And, you know, I'm pleased to say that this is something that Mayor Stother and I worked on together with Bob Stube from Public Works and his team, James Steele and Dave Fanslaw and their team in planning, and the Chamber of Commerce, the property owners, the businesses, and we created this two-way district that had various source of funding, including from the people who were business owners and property owners in the district, and created the two-way, and they had this promise, you know, if you can do this, believe me, we can really take it over from here, and you see today, just a few years later, with hundreds of jobs, many millions in reinvestment, the progress, it's what's happened. And I would say that I'm there in the neighborhood a lot. I'm there for meetings, I'm there for ribbon cuttings, I'm there for dining, I'm there for entertainment, I'm there with my wife, with my family, with kids, and I'm in different places, and it's amazing how many times people ask if I own this, or I own that, or how well I'm doing. And I, and the reality is, is I don't own any part of any of this, and I'm not any part of the development team and have no ownership interest. And before all this happened, I would say, I did look at the Cattlemen Building as a potential law office, but I couldn't convince my then-partner to move east, and so we took a pass. But this, this in many ways is this hotel, this iconic building, is, it is the symbol, it is, everything emanates in this district from what this hotel and this neighborhood once was, and the hotel is the symbol for that. It is in every sense of the word iconic, and this is a wonderful project, and it's going to create hundreds of jobs. It's going to bring tens of thousands of visitors to this district per year, who are going to be supporting the businesses in this area. And I'm very pleased that this project has come this far, and that this plan has been put together, and I'm glad to support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
President Gray, I wanted to, first off, apologize for the, what we heard during the opposition's remarks towards you. That's, this isn't the place, and that was totally uncalled for, so I wanted to back up and apologize for that. I had some other words with, there was a kid in the crowd back there, so we'll save that. Blackstone Hotel, I think it speaks for itself, the Blackstone, and I think Jay's hidden behind the TV. Sorry, I got to call you out. I got a question for you. So we hear about this extra tax and all these extra fees and everything, but we don't talk about what it actually does for the area. So let's say, and this is going to be a real easy question, sorry, you weren't prepared for this. If my family's going out to eat, and we have, and there's other EEA's, but say we're just outside of this map we have, so we're not inside of here, and we choose to eat somewhere else out of this area, will we pay this tax inside this target area that you have?
Jalen, 3814 Farnum, want to make sure I state my name here, but the answer is no, simply.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also just want to acknowledge the Blackstone Business District itself. This has been one of the true transformations in our city over the last several years, and I think one of the best things about our city are our neighborhood business districts and the character they provide, and so to see the development team that's here today take this all on and help make it happen has been really impressive. They talked a lot about team, and they talked a lot about the city team that helped them do this, but the other thing I'd point out is the team you have here today, which are all the business owners in this area that are helping making this happen too, because without that, it wouldn't be occurring either, and so I find it really impressive. They're all in support, in support of this, this development prospect we have here today. They all took time out of their schedules to come down here and testify as busy business owners. So I think having that joint and collective vision for what the area is going to be, what it is and what it's going to be, is very impressive, and I think bodes very well for the future. And I would agree that we can't take on a major project like the renovation of the Blackstone Hotel without some type of public-private partnership to get it done. I think it is an appropriate use of TIF, and I think in that respect, it'll be the linchpin to taking the next step here in the Blackstone District and securing its future. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Next item.
Item 38, an ordinance authorizing and directing an issue of general obligation bonds and an issue of general obligation refunding bonds of the City of Omaha to be termed various purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2018A, and general obligation refunding bonds taxable Series 2018B, and the aggregate principal amount, not to exceed $75,500,000.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 38 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 39, an ordinance to approve a professional services agreement with Tony G. Jensen, and the amount is $7,380, and to authorize funding for such agreement, to provide funding for one, community safety assessment and accountability coordinator.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 39 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 40, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Women's Center for Advancement in the amount of $39,377.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 40 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Non-action items, items 41 through 55, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Second roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Harding.
He said yes.
Oh, he said yes, sorry, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:38.